Welcome to the May 8 Milford zoning board hearing. We've got one session under general business. Before this general business, any board members have anything for the board? If not, I received a letter from Jerry this morning, actually in tonight's package. This is a request of some general business in relation to property at 24 Water Street in Milford by David Claro. I believe Attorney Fernandez is here to represent David Claro. Why don't you come on up, John? In an essence, Jerry has sent out this letter concerning a property that had some fire damage, and we have a mechanism in place to handle this situation, and I'll read it in short, and then John can fill us in on what they're trying to do. In ordinance, by the way, a pre-existing non-conforming structure, our uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority by a special permit designated by the ordinance of the bylaw that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. For that such change and extension or alteration will be substantially not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. In a letter here this morning that we just passed out to board members, from John Fernandez, this is concerning a property at 24 Water Street. So as board members review this letter, John, I'll turn it over to you, kind of explain to us what you're trying to do.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name's John Fernandez, an attorney, office at 12 Main Street. I'm here with David Claro. David's a builder here in the community, been doing building in and around the area for years, some very good properties that he's built, sold, and/or retained. You may be familiar with the fact that about maybe a year plus or two years ago, is it longer than that, that that place burned down?
It's been about a year.
Yeah, about a year ago, property on Water Street burned, 24 Water Street, and it was a pretty significant burn. We actually have a picture in the package that shows its pre-existing condition and its post-fire condition. The then owners took the building down and left it as a vacant lot, with Mr. Claro then buying that to reconstruct. At the time that we, that Mr. Claro bought, his intention was to build within the footprint of the pre-existing building. There the, as I explained in the letter, the pre-existing building was about 1,000 square feet rectangular footprint with a side-covered porch that actually extended to the left-hand boundary of the property, and the second floor and the attic space were about 650 square feet. So the first floor bumped out a few hundred square feet beyond the second floor and the attic. The first floor was a single apartment with five rooms and two bedrooms. The second floor and the attic was a combined two-bedroom apartment, five rooms, two bedrooms. And you can see in the picture that before the fire, that there's a window in that attic that is where the bedroom was, and even in the burned-out picture, you can see that the frame of the window, three-quarters of the frame of the window actually still being there. There was a bedroom up there, which there probably shouldn't have been. So Mr. Claro was getting permission to rebuild the structure as it appeared, not necessarily exactly as it appeared, but within the exact footprint and with the same living space as pre-existed. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 1, and under the Milford Bylaw 3.1.3, because it's a two-family home, single and two-family homes are entitled to special protection where even though it was pre-existing non-conforming lot, it's about 4,900 square feet, where it's a residential zone that would require a larger lot, and even though it was a non-conforming structure, it was too close to the sidelines and the front line, it could still be rebuilt as a matter of right and without a special permit. When Mr. Claro looked at rebuilding, what he decided would be more useful would be to, instead of trying to use attic space or trying to squeeze the two-bedroom into the second-floor unit within the 650 square feet, he had a design done, which is also included, which would box off, square off, the building, so that the second floor and attic would now be the 1,000 square feet similar to the first floor. So it would just be a complete box instead of a bump out on the first floor, if everybody can visualize that, see it within the plan. He's not expanding the footprint by that, and he's not extending the height beyond the existing height. So the height that was there of the old building would not be exceeded. The footprint that was there of the old building would not be exceeded. What he would be doing would be adding to that second floor, that additional 250 square feet, and the same with the attic space, but the attic space in this case would be constricted such that it would not be usable attic space for anything other than storage, so nobody could use a third bedroom up there. His goal, bring that second bedroom down to the second floor the way it should be, and you can see it from the floor plans. In talking with the building inspector and with Jerry Moody, under Chapter 48, Section 6, Paragraph 1, under our bylaw, and a series of a couple of cases that came down in 2005 and later in 2009 or '10 called Bransford and Auckland, the decision of the court was that a zoning board could make a finding, a finding. We review this and we find that a modest increase in a non-conforming, single or two-family structure was modest enough that it does not truly intensify the non-conformity of that building, and therefore could proceed as a matter of right without a full special permit hearing. So we're allowed to come to the board at a regular meeting, present that, and the board can consider whether the increase that he wants to make in the reconstruction and restoration of this building is modest enough that it doesn't intensify that non-conformity such, the existing non-conformities, such that it is more detrimental to the neighborhood. If you make that finding, then he can simply proceed to the building inspector with a building permit and not have to go through the whole special permit process. And so in this case, the non-conform-- and by the way, the purpose of those cases was about, or the history of those cases that I mentioned was about the mansionization that you see taking place on places like Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket, where somebody would find an old out parcel of land that was undersized with a 2,000-square-foot house, and within the sidelines and setbacks, they would create a 6,000-square-foot building and try to say, "We can do this as a matter of right." The court said, "No, no, no. That's not a modest increase. That is a, that's going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood. You need to go get a special permit and prove that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and that it can be done." But the court said, in cases where the increase is modest enough that it's really not creating any detriment to the neighborhood and not intensifying the non-conformity significantly, the board can find that as a matter of law, this is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, and you may proceed. That's the finding that we asked for in the letter. So what is the non-conformity out here? The non-conformity is this, this footprint of the old structure is too close to one side, too close to the other, and too close to the street. It's not set back by the required amounts, and the lot itself is non-conforming. What is Mr. Claro proposing to do? He's proposing to square off the building such that that already backside, that's out, the extra 250 feet, will now have a second story on it and an attic. So it adds that 250 plus some attic floor space as well. And Dave did bring a picture, an aerial photo, that I can share with you that shows the existing structure prior to the fire, which is in the red, and what you'll see is that the buildings next to it and about it are the same way. This was the only building that had sort of the bump out in the back. The other buildings are rectangular boxes up to bottom. So what we would suggest to you is that it's also consistent with the neighborhood and therefore would not intensify the non-conformity to the neighborhood. So let me stop there and hope that I've been clear. And again, I think in discussing the matter with the building inspector, with Town Council Moody, there was agreement that this is the proper course to first come to the board with and find if the board would agree that the finding is appropriate, that this is not an increase in non-conformity that is more detrimental to the neighborhood. If you find that, we can proceed. If you were to find differently, he would have to begin the process of a special permit.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Attorney Fernandez. Board members have comments, questions?
One. How long do you think construction will take?
Four months, five months, maybe.
Okay. I think it's a great plan.
Thank you. Good luck.
Why wouldn't this be a special permit? I'm confused. I've been on the board 11 or 12 years, and every house that's burnt down has had to come back here for a special permit, and, you know, you know, it's a, you're looking for, you're looking for this to be a two-bedroom apartment, two apartments upstairs and downstairs on the small, little, posted-side stamp lot? Is this a two-family? Is that what we're proposing to do?
It has been a two-family. The same number of rooms that were in the prior building would be in this building, and each of the apartments, each had two bedrooms in them. And the reason that it is not a special permit is that Dave's doing something unique to the reconstructions you've seen in other situations. He's not proposing to go outside the previous existing footprint. Typically, and I've brought a number of them to your board in the past, that are appropriate special permits because when a building burns down, typically somebody says, "That old footprint doesn't work for me. I would like to expand to the left, to the right, to the back," in some situation like that. So by Dave staying within the footprint, were he not to increase the first floor to a second floor in the back? Because remember, that is not increasing the dimension of the building, and it's not increasing the footprint dimension, and it's not increasing beyond the current height. The current height will remain the same. If he was going to go higher than the height of the old building, he would require a special permit. If he was going to go wider or deeper, he would require a special permit. In this case, he's not, but because there is an increase by the second floor having square footage, we require the finding from the board that that's modest enough that it doesn't create a detriment to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, just my opinion, I probably, I strongly disagree with you. I think that this is a special permit, and, you know, I think that, you know, in Milford, everything's always, you know, there's no parking, everyone's got traffic, and, you know, personally myself, I think this should be a single family, not a two-family, you know, in a burnt-down, you know, it should be rebuilt as a single family, so I would be against it.
I would just say that he can, as a matter of right, rebuild the two-family, absolutely, without a special permit, under the law. He would be able to do that if he didn't go up that second floor. There would be no stop to that. He's able to do that as it is, so.
Yeah, you know, I'm just one person, whatever, that's my opinion.
I understand.
There's a question. You intend to build on the existing foundation?
I wanted to, but it's not structurally sound, so it would have to be just pulled out and redone. I probably could fix it, but it's just easier to pull it out and put it in the exact same area, just in a, as a matter of, just building a better house. And respectfully, and Dave, I understand your position on it. I am citing from Chapter 48, Section 6, that says, "Single and two-family homes have special exemption." Our bylaw 3.1.3 says it has special exemption, and the Auckland case in particular is the one that, in follow-up to Bransford, pointed out that when there is this modest increase, it even talked about putting a garage on a site or turning a one-story, a one-car garage into a two-car garage, as being something that can be done as a matter of right by a finding that it's not more detrimental. So it is within the power, but you may decide your power shouldn't be exercised.
But I think that everyone in town's got to decide either there's a lot of traffic in town, and there's a lot of, there's no parking, or, you know, everyone wants to have it all ways. There's no parking, there's a ton of traffic, and then we're here, let's build, you know, let's cram it in the neighborhood like this and put another two-family in there. I just, you know, everyone always complains about traffic and too many bedroom units and everything, and I just think, you know, I think it is a modest increase.
How many square feet more is the proposed structure going to be?
About 250 to 300 square feet of living space, and then there would be the attic.
How old was the original house?
Oh, time immemorial on Water Street. It's a very old, it was a very old structure.
So it had, what, like a Fieldstone?
Yeah, it predated.
Foundation?
Partially, partially.
Okay, then you wouldn't be able to, you'd want to rip that out and put it in foundation.
But stay within the same footprint, and to the point, it's a narrow lot. It has always been a two-family. The houses around it are two, three, four-family houses in that neighborhood, so it's not a change in traffic condition, it's not a train, change in the number of bedrooms, it's not a change in the number of people that should go there, and if you've seen Dave's work, he does really, really quality work.
You'll have the same number of bedrooms, bathrooms, everything's the same?
Absolutely, yeah. One bed, two bedrooms, one bath, one kitchen, one living room, each floor.
Another question. If, if he was to build it exactly as the original house was, with all the second floor being expanded, then that would all be as a matter of right to be able to do that, right?
Yes.
The decision of this board is pretty simple. You'll be on this hearing in place of the fifth member.
Okay.
Charlie, so the decision basically is, we've got a choice to either vote to approve the finding, that this is, this is adequate under the guidelines that we have currently for the town of Milford, or we can request the applicant to go through the special permit process. I understand the process, I know what this is, what they're trying to do here, it's reasonable, but that's only my opinion.
Yeah, but it's, so what's a modest increase? Is 400 feet a modest increase? Is it 800? Is it 200? Which is a modest increase? So where are we going to draw the line? Are we going to say, "Well, if it's 800 feet," or the next person that comes in, if 1,000 square feet, what's the, you know, what's the process?
No, they're just staying, they're staying right within the footprint.
No, but they're still, they're adding 200 square feet on the second floor.
They're going on the back, just that second floor, so that the third-floor bedroom is eliminated. That bedroom up on that third floor was eliminated.
I understand what they're doing, but what's, you know, what's the, if this is an opinion, is it 200? Is it 400? Is it 600? What's a modest increase? I think, you know, that you go through the special permit increase, but like everyone else.
Well, if you, and a good question may be, if you're pulling that bedroom off that third level of how many square feet that was, and you're replacing it down on the second level where it should be, what's the difference of the modification of the square footage?
That's the point. It's not a change in use, actually. It retains the exact use, and as I say, eliminates actually one of the non-conformities, which was the porch on the left-hand side.
Right. You remove the porch.
And really, the judgment is whether going up that floor, whether it's 250 feet or 500 square feet or 300, does it intensify it in such a way that you find it's more detrimental to the neighborhood? There may be a situation where 250 feet is more detrimental to a neighborhood there. We suggest to you in this particular situation, it's modest enough, and under the circumstances, being contained with inside the footprint of the building and just going up the floor, it's not intensifying the use in any way being detrimental to the neighborhood overall, because it doesn't increase the actual use of the building.
So how many square feet were there in the original structure?
1,000, 650 together, plus then the attic space, which was living space that was 650 more.
I'm just trying to get a feel of like--
Probably a couple hundred feet, maybe, or four hundred.
Yeah, if, the attic space having been, yeah, the attic space having been a bedroom, and that being 650, and the floor below it being 650 and 13, and the floor below it being approximately 1,000, you've got approximately 2,300. When he gets done, you're actually going to be down to about 2,000, because it'll be the first floor at 1,000, the second floor at 1,000, the attic space being nothing but storage. That's the way it'll be constructed, so it's actually--
You're really not--
It's actually reduction in living space.
You're not adding any more square footage.
Of living space.
It's just you're changing the configuration of the structure.
Of the living space, right, of the living space, such that that third-floor living space becomes constructed in such a way that it's just attic space.
So there'd just be attic and--
Right, so it's actually less actual occupancy.
And there's no way that they could put it, something up on the, in the attic there?
Not the way he's going to construct it.
No.
Okay. Will you be able to stand up?
Stand, no, no, no. It's going to be a lower pitch. The way it'll be constructed, there'll probably only be about four or five feet of actual height.
So it's really just dead storage?
Just limited storage, that's all.
All right. Okay. I'm good.
Yeah, the only thing I would like to put on the table is that, you know, the point Dave brought up is, it's up to us to decide. I think this is what the statute says.
Correct.
It's up to the board to decide if the 250 feet is modest or not. That's, that's where, that's our decision, and that's how we try to deal with it. And the other thing is, this gentleman didn't have to come here if he just made, he has a right to have a two-family home on that footprint. All he's saying is, he wants to make it better, and I think if you want to tell somebody that they have to make a, just a single-family home, then you're putting a financial burden that never existed there in the first place. So that's just my thoughts.
Well, the other thing that I frankly like to see is that they're not extending the side porch, and they're eliminating the side porch, so that they're keeping within the box they needed to keep in. Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve it.
A motion by Charlie to approve. We have a second.
Second is?
Second by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If four in favor, one opposed. Thank you. You're welcome. You know what the finding is, so you're good to go.
Yes.
I'm going to sign this plan, just for the sake of having it on record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next hearing is Supernova Solution LLC, 21-23 month, listen. On this panel, anybody have a client, by the way?
Mr. Chairman, my client is, was supposed to be here and has not showed up at this point, and I could go and call him, and I think you're at a time where you could probably take the next one and skip over me.
We may be able to do that.
And then I could call him and hopefully--
7:15, we can, yeah, we can do that, no problem, if the second client is here.
I think Mr. Pettenari is ready to go.
Then we'll, we'll move on to Kevin J. Hunter, Free Field Pond Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go contact my client.
You need a continuance, maybe he's watching the Bruins game, if you need a continuance.
If he's smart, I mean, I'm here and he's home watching the Bruins game, right? Something's wrong.
Okay. You need--
Yeah, I have to go to the net, yep. They're out of order.
Is it right there? This is under, okay. On this panel, the main members, and Mark, you'll sit on this one, and of course Mary. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, this is on the application of, this is Laura, right, Ernie?
No, this is Kevin.
Hunter?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Second one? On the application of Kevin Elisa Crossley Hunter of Free Field Pond Road, Milford for variance from the provisions of Section 2.4 and/or 2.5 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a 45,000-square-foot parcel, more or less located on the southerly side of Field Pond Road, known and numbered as Free Field Pond Road. The relief is sought in order to permit and maintenance of the existing deck attached to the single-family residential structure on the premises closer to the real lot line than it otherwise permitted, and also to allow the construction of a shed slash pool house to serve on the existing swimming pool on the premises within the required yard setback in the subject zoning district. Concerning the application, why don't we take the application, we're probably going to go to Attorney Pettenari on the questions, but I will read into the record. We did have a, the planning board did review this at May 6, and recommended, three in favor, two opposed. I believe they in-favored the deck variance, however, not the shed. Town plan elect, correct?
Excuse me, it was unanimous on the deck, and two had reservations about the structure.
Okay. The applicant requests a variance to construct a 14-by-32 detached accessory structure on the subject property to be 12 feet from the rear south property line. The property is very irregularly shaped, and it is adjacent to the sewer pump station that is located on the north and west side of the property. The lot configuration have otherwise accommodated the proposed structure, but the intrusion created by the location of the sewer pump station in its current location, Larry had basically, town, town plan had, would recommend a favorable report to the ZB, wow, it took a while to get that out. All right, on the application itself, which I'd like to have Attorney Pettenari answer these questions, concerning a permit has not been refused, correct?
That's correct.
All right. The intensity of your schedule, I do have, what circumstances exist relating to the soil condition, shape, and topography of the subject premises, which does not generally affect the land and the zoning district? And I'd like you to answer that, Mr. Pettenari, instead of reading this verbatim twice, and then you're going to be saying it again, so I think it'll save some time for you.
Sure, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I'll approach--
Absolutely.
The lot in question is outlined in yellow. When we went to the planning board the other night, Larry and I both agreed that in all the years we've been doing this kind of lot, this is the strangest-shaped lot we've ever seen. The lot goes from this corner and travels almost 800 linear feet to this corner, at which point it jogs to accommodate the pumping station that services the subdivision. It then goes back to this lot line, which separates the subject premises from land owned by the town of Milford, which is presently vacant, and then travels in an equivalent distance all the way back to here. At some point, there's less than 10 linear feet in depth on this lot. At its widest point, which is right here on the easterly sideline of the structure, is about 240 feet in depth. So the shape of this lot is so irregular that in the frontage that is provided on Field Pond Road, if you simply go across the street, there are five full, single-family houses, which have, in the aggregate, frontage on Field Pond Road, which doesn't equal the frontage here. Obviously, the depth of this lot, made development of this lot in such a way that the house be located where it presently is located, the only option that was available. In addition to the shape of the lot, there's an easement on this end of the property, on the westerly end of the property, for drainage, and there's an easement over here, which really doesn't affect the choice of building location, on the western, excuse me, the easterly end of the property as well, and there's wetlands in the middle of the lot. So there's not a lot of places that this house could have been constructed. For the record, Mr. Hunter is here with me this evening. Mr. and Mrs. Hunter bought this house in its configuration, on the lot, and had nothing to do with either the engineering or the planning that went into the configuration of the lot. After they had been in the house a number of years, Mr. and Mrs. Hunter put on a new deck. The deck they put on in 2007 is within the setback requirement, but it was built pursuant to this validly issued building permit, which was issued in 2007. So for purposes of our conversation this evening, up until very recently, the hunters weren't aware that their options to build on this property were literally contained only within this pink-shaded area. About a year ago, they made a decision to install an in-ground pool. One of the primary reasons they did that is because it performs a therapeutic function for one of their children. They put in a concrete decking all the way around the pool, and the pool is installed. It doesn't appear on the aerial photographs here and here, because they're older than last year, but if you take a look at the aerial photograph, which I've attached to your memorandum, the pool is located in this general area near the, what would be the westerly lot line, behind the pumping station. There's concrete decking provided here for the pool, and again, if you take a look at the aerial photograph, and if you take a look at the plan that we've had reserved by G and H, you can see that the location for the pool was selected because it's the highest, the driest, and the flattest area. The decking for the pool also encroached into the setback area, which doesn't cause any zoning problems, but this year, when the hunters decided they would like to propose a structure on the property to give them some relief from the sun and other weather conditions, they discovered they couldn't put it here, and they couldn't put it here, where the decking had been installed for the pool, because in both locations, it conflicted with reserved setback requirements under the bylaw. The structure they proposed to build is this structure right here. There's no foundation, there's no rear wall, there's a roof with a shelter, and a room for storage. It's nothing elaborate, it's nothing luxurious, it's just something-- I think most of you, I think all of you know, that I've been around long enough to understand that I can't with a straight face tell you that there's anything I've ever presented to this board that rises to the level of a catastrophe, if you don't vote favorably. But the word hardship means things to different people. And the interpretation that this town has always used for the word hardship has been, as long as you're measuring hardship relative to some other concern, you can manifest a hardship in the inability to use your property as fully as you could otherwise use it, so long as there is no corresponding harm to anybody else. And on that score, Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen, I would call your attention to the abutting property. The abutting property is shown at the bottom of both of these aerial photographs. The abutting property is owned by the town of Milford. It was one of the parcels of property that had been considered for the location of the new elementary school, but had been rejected. And it's very heavily densely vegetated and wooded, and it frankly creates a situation where seeing this structure through this vegetation is impossible. So our argument, ladies and gentlemen, would be that the hunters presently can't use this property fully in the way they would like to use it, and the relief that they seek creates no real problem, no real damage to anyone else. So correspondingly, we would respectfully submit that the hardship to the hunters is such that voting affirmatively manifests the belief that this town usually manifests, and that is, so long as nobody is hurting anyone else, they will be given the relief that this board can feel free to give. We believe that the location of this structure, and the kind of structure that it is, and the reasons for its genesis in connection with the use, in connection with the pool, in connection with the hunters' property, is reasonable. We don't find any way that it creates any condition that any of the neighborhood properties are affected in an adverse way. We don't find any condition that results from the creation of this structure in this location that in any way derogates from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. And we believe overall that it actually accomplishes a good, a valid pursuit of the town of Milford zoning policy, which is that folks should be allowed to utilize their property so long as correspondingly no one else is damaged. We believe that the lot is almost ridiculously irregularly shaped, through no fault of the hunters, and we believe that the relief we're asking for is reasonable. And that would be it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Pettenari. Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this application? If not, I'll turn it over to the board members. I'll start with Charlie, you have everything?
You had a buffer zone here on the print. What was that, Ernie?
Charlie.
That was just one.
That was a wetland consideration that was done years ago.
Okay.
When they were talking about expansion. When Mr. and Mrs. Hunter put this deck on with that building permit in '07, they also got a permit from the ConCon.
I have a question. Is there a shed on this property too now?
Second?
I went by there today. Is there a shed on the property?
It was the shed that used to be there, that we pulled out of the way until we're finished with this project.
So, is the shed, based on what I saw, it looks like the current shed that I saw is to the left of the wetlands. Is that correct?
Temporary placement, yes.
And what are you doing with that shed?
We're going to be taking that down, so it doesn't accommodate what we need it for. It's falling apart. It was a shed that was there when we got there.
So the pool is within the front setback?
Here.
Correct?
Here.
Uh-huh. I just, it...
I'm voting yes.
Well, that's fine.
I'm voting yes.
I just don't understand why this pool house has to be so large.
Yep.
I just don't understand why it's got to be so large.
Well, it's doing a couple of things.
I just asked the same question on the last hearing, why the bedrooms have to be so large. This is a pool house, not a two-acre lot or whatever. What, what, you know, what?
We can disagree as board members.
It's a little pool house. It's a, I'm not getting upset, it's a little pool house. Do I need to draw, do I want to get a tape measure out?
We're calling it a pool house deliberately. Just let's put that on the record as well. We don't want to be misleading in any way. There's a provision in the bylaw that says that you can install an accessory structure half closer to your boundary line than the existing setback requirement if that, if that shed, if that accessory structure is 120 square feet or less. 120 square feet will solve the storage issues that the hunters have, but won't provide the shelter. It's a simple answer to Mr. Consigli's question. The reason that it's in the configuration it's in is because it fits the decking, to be very honest. But they do in fact need both the storage component and the shelter component to make this work. So it's a fair question that a smaller shed, shed alone, would not resolve, nor a smaller shelter, shelter alone would resolve. So because this is the suggestion to make both of those problems resolve themselves, it's in the configuration it's in. It fits right into the decking, and it's, actually, it's designed so as to be complementary to the pool.
So it's going to be on the pool decking?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, because again, I mean, the, there's some open space here, but it's not level, and it's not prepared for this, and it doesn't give them exactly what they need, which is the ability to stay in this and keep an eye on the children when they're playing in the pool. So that's the, that's the idea behind it. And one last thing, and Larry's point is a valid one. If this pump station wasn't here, we wouldn't be here, because all of this would be pulled 50 feet closer to the road, and the setbacks wouldn't be a problem. Because Mr. Pines is right, this is a 45,000 square foot lot. Although everything is in on the westerly end of the lot because of its configuration, it's a big lot. And consequently, the jog that's here hurts the hunters as much as the fact that there's only 10 feet of width down here.
What's the, yeah, what's the actual size of the shed part as opposed to the?
I don't know.
It's a...
Because 32 feet, I mean, it's, it is a large, 14 by 32.
Right. Houses are 32. It's 14 deep, and it's 32 wide. Do you know, Kevin, if you know?
I do. So it is the standard eight by 14. So normally it'd be eight by 12, but this is eight by 14.
Okay, so it's, it's 14 deep?
That way.
Right. And it's eight feet across?
From here to here.
Right. Okay, so the rest of that opening then?
Roof. The shelter is roof.
Yeah. And again, without getting into all of the crazy arguments, we're not sure that's a structure, you know, the roof by itself with a post may not be a structure. And the other crazy argument is, he probably could have stuck it here, and nobody would have owned. And, you know, he's here because he wants to do this the right way, and he's always gone through the permit process, sometimes to his own surprise, in an incorrect way. But that's the kind of people they are, and so we're here trying to get the...
So that isn't something that, now, is it, it's opened on three sides or just open, it's open on two sides?
All, all three, so...
All three sides are open?
So it's the shed with a roof?
I'm just looking at down the road, would they convert that and add it become garage space or something? Are you putting it on a, a concrete?
We drive the car from there into the pool.
No, I don't know how to act, hey, knock it off. I don't know how to, uh...
He's very fresh tonight, man. That's all I got to say.
The driveway's over here.
Okay, so you'd have to go, you'd have to go through the pool? Well, if they have one of those elephant top things, then they probably could drive right across it.
I could show you a picture.
Okay, yeah, just...
That's the way, backyard.
Okay.
And then the different points of construction. This is the area in the back.
Okay, so that's where you want to put it?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And the old shed, which is sort of what surprised us when we started doing the investigation, the old shed was actually zero setback. It was zero by zero, it was right in the corner.
Okay.
And what we did is we pulled it back in, we actually thought the setback was 10 feet, so we went and pulled it in, and we learned otherwise.
Okay, all right. No, no, that's fine.
You're going to have plumbing in this?
No.
None?
No. Nope, nothing.
Only question I have.
Okay, if that's it from board members, close the hearing and take it under advisement. You have your last word, of course.
Again, I think that the design of the structure to complement what's there now, and the manner in which it's proposed, make this, we believe, a reasonable exercise of the variance power of the board.
Thank you. Thank you, close the hearing. Board members, you want to go right to a vote?
Absolutely.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pines over there, raise your hand.
Okay, you want to do it quiet, I'll let you do it. I'll let you, go ahead.
I was supporting your motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Do it, and I'll second.
Motion by Mary, you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by David. The only thing I'd like to put a contingency in it is just that the old shed that's sitting down the street on the property gets totally removed. Is that okay?
Yep.
With that condition, all those in favor, that message by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They put a jacuzzi on, me and Mary will come up and try it out.
Okay.
No plumbing.
No plumbing.
Okay, thank you. I don't watch it, because I jinx it.
So you're going to make us stay here?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, the next one we're going to have?
We'll go back to the first one there.
I did reach my client, unfortunately, he is going to be detained by a non-ruined emergency, and he has requested...
We can do that. Let me get the extension out.
The next, who asked me?
I have a calendar.
I'm on the ball here.
Good, aye. Good, thank you.
The next, the next meeting is June 12th.
June 12th.
Yep, it's the second.
So, uh...
Supernova? Supernova, I can throw that aside. Supernova, who was it?
Just for you.
How stack?
Now you can join the board.
I would, that's my issue.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one more?
Muriel Lane.
Muriel Lane, the applicant here from Muriel Lane. Come on up front and center. And I'd like you to come up to the microphone, please, and as soon as I read the hearing, I'll give you, I'll give you the table. This is on the application of Michael Law of 20 Muriel Lane, Milford, Mass. for variance from the setback provisions of Section 2.4 and 2.5 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel land located on the other side of Muriel Lane and Clearwater Drive, Clearview Drive, excuse me, known and numbered at 20 Muriel Lane. The relief is sought in order to permit the erection of a shed closer to the lot lines than it otherwise permitted. On this panel tonight, if there's no conflicts, will be the main members, and then we're back with Charlie.
Yep.
Okay. Have a seat for a minute while I read this. Be patient, because I have to read through the process.
All right.
You haven't pulled a permit yet, you're looking for a setback requirement. Any circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, and photography, the application, the applicant indicates no. It basically indicates if the variance was not granted, what hardship would it be caused if circumstances described? The applicant states none. Apparently, you're indicating the shed will match the house, the same siding as the door. And on the plan, there is a location of the shed. We do have a letter, the planning board reviewed this listed from the scheduled meeting of May 6th, and recommends the following. Four in favor, one abstention, see town plan a letter. Town plan a letter indicates the applicant requests a various constructed 12-by-16 detached accessory structure on the property to be five feet from the north sideline and 15 feet, where 15 feet is required. The property is a corner lot and is non-conforming as to the lot area. The applicant has presented no evidence as to hardship on the property to justify placement of the structure within the required side yard. It would appear that the location is being proposed more out of convenience rather than out of necessity. If the proposed structure were 10 by 12, the side yard setback in this zone would be 7.5. With that, sure, I'm going to turn the floor over to you, kind of give us an idea of what you want. I do have a plot plan in here indicating approximately where the shed's going. Is this the exact location?
Yes, that left.
So you're trying to put a 12-by-16 foot shed, five feet from the back lot line and 15 from the side. That's about what you're trying to do?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a pullback here, by the way?
No. Behind, basically behind the shed is woods, where that five feet is.
You're in the corner there?
Yeah.
Okay. Board members, any comments?
Why did you make it the size you did?
That was just kind of a rough, I mean, it's not a definite size. It's going to be no bigger than that, that would be the biggest that I would go, but it would probably be a little bit smaller, a little bit shorter, maybe 12 by 12. I just, I'm a carpenter, I work for myself, so just trying to keep my tools out of the garage, away from the kids, is the main reason for it. And I have a small lot to begin with, so it's kind of tough to move it in.
The five-foot setback, what is, that you show here, at least, that's where you want to position it? What is the limit? Is that the real, this lot of the?
That's the rear property line.
Yeah, that's just going off of, I tried to just eye the property line, because it's all woods directly behind, so my neighbor's woods would be the back of the shed.
What's the square footage of your lot?
It's on there.
Does the 15 feet conform to?
15's required on the side.
Side, and what's required on the, on the rear?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half?
Yes, so he's looking for a two-and-a-half foot relief on the, on the back.
Because there's already...
Yeah, but that's, seven and a half is, if it's a shed is...
10 by 12.
Only 120 square feet, right?
That's correct.
If the shed is the size that he wants to make it, then the...
He can conform. He can conform.
No, no, I'm saying if it's the size, he wants to make a shed that's...
16 by 12.
16 by 12.
Right.
So it doesn't fit under the law that says a shed that's 120 square feet can be half the distance from the rear. So he has to be full distance from the rear, which is 15 feet, am I wrong?
You should be able to be half on a shed.
If, but this isn't a shed under the law.
What is it?
It's a utility building. A shed to be able to go halfway to the lot lines can, we've come up in the other article, can only be 120 square feet, 10 by 12. I know, I've been through all this.
Okay.
All right? If I built a shed that's 16 by 20, all right?
Okay.
In other words, you can only, if it, if it's a shed as defined by our bylaws, which is 120 square feet, then you can be within half the distance of what normal setback requirements are.
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, if that was the case, he could be, what, seven and a half feet and conform?
Mm-hmm.
But he can't, because his shed size is 16 by 20. It's no longer considered under the law as a shed, but as a utility building.
Okay, any other board member want to comment?
I saw the property today, and you really don't have anyplace else to put it.
No, there's already, the previous owner had, there's basically some crushed stone already there. I guess they had two big dogs, and that was kind of their litter box. Yeah, I mean, I'd looked into doing a second garage, but the price is just, it's too much to do a garage, and we're just running out of space with two little kids.
Dave, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set, I'm fine with it.
You're all set, you're all set with the size, too?
Yep.
Well, Mary?
No, I'm, I'm fine with it.
If, we asked you to bring the size down, would you cooperate with bringing the size down?
Yeah.[1568.58] Does, does the fifteen feet conform to?
Fifteen's required on the side.
Side, and what's required on the, on the rear?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half?
Yeah, so he's looking for a two and a half foot relief on the, on the back.
Because there's already, um...
Yeah, but that's seven and a half is, if the shed is...
Ten by twelve.
Only a hundred and twenty square feet, right?
That's correct.
If the shed is the size that he wants to make it, then the...
He can conform. He can conform.
No, no, I'm saying if it's the size, he wants to make a shed that's...
Sixteen by twelve.
Sixteen by twelve.
Right.
So it doesn't fit under the law that says a shed that's a hundred and twenty square feet can be half the distance from the rear. So he has to be full distance from the rear, which is fifteen feet, am I wrong?
You should be able to be half on a shed.
If it conforms, but this isn't a shed under the law.
What is it?
It's a, a utility building. A shed to, to be able to go halfway to the, the lot lines can, we've come up in the other article, can only be a hundred and twenty square feet, ten by twelve. I know, I've been through all this.
Okay.
All right? If I built a shed that's sixteen by twenty, all right?
Okay.
In other words, you can only, you can, if it, if it's a shed as defined by our bylaws, which is a hundred and twenty square feet, then you can be within half the distance of what normal setback requirements are. So in other words, if that was the case, he could be, what, seven and a half feet and conform. But he can't, because his shed size is sixteen by twenty. It's no longer considered under the law as a shed, but as a utility building.
Okay, any other board member want to comment?
I saw the property today, and you really don't have any place else to put it.
No, there's already, the previous owner had, there's basically some crushed stone already there, I guess they had two big dogs, and that was kind of their litter box. Yeah, I mean, I'd looked into doing a second garage, but the price is just, it's too much to do a garage, and we're just running out of space with two little kids.
Dave, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set, I'm fine with it.
You're all set, you're all set with the size, too?
Yep.
Well, Mary?
No, I'm, I'm fine with it.
If, we asked you to bring the size down, would you cooperate with bringing the size down?
Yeah.
Instead of sixteen by twelve?
Yeah, how much you...
I wouldn't make you do a five by six.
He can do a ten by twelve and meet the zoning restrictions under, which would still make this the real lot seven and a half feet.
Right. You got to wait for the ten by twelve?
Okay.
You'd rather not.
If you went to a ten by twelve?
Yeah.
And I'm also a carpenter, and you do have a situation here where you're nowhere near the variance. What if you went a little higher and put a loft in it, would that help?
Yeah, the reason I was thinking sixteen was so I could kind of put ladders on the back and hide them so nobody can see them.
I know.
Not so much that, just to keep them out of sight, yeah.
I know.
You saying ten by twelve?
Well, ten by twelve puts you within only a couple of feet of the exclusion.
Yeah.
But if you went a little higher and you put a loft in for your tools, et cetera, but the ladder issue is still a ladder issue.
Yeah.
Twenty-four footer, you're not going to build a twenty-four foot shed because of a twenty-four footer.
Yeah.
I'm sure you have a twenty-four footer.
Yeah, I mean, if it breaks down to twelve feet or so, at least it'll be kind of, kind of hidden.
I'm just throwing it out there to help you get through here.
Yeah.
See, I don't have a problem with the size.
I don't either.
I mean, I'm thinking he's, he's got some, he's, he's got some plans for it, and he's talking about the ladder, I mean, I...
All right.
I mean, I'm fine with it.
I'm sorry, I disagree that, you know, we have a, a law that defines a shed as being ten by twelve, and even that would have to be seven and a half feet from the real lot line.
Right, and we can make that seven and a half feet from the real lot line.
Well, it's interesting, if you look at the law, because I, I went, it says here, accessory use, customary accessory uses are permitted except are specifically restricted in article two or elsewhere. Uses should not be considered accessory if they occupy more than thirty percent of the floor area or more than fifty percent of the land area on any lot. Now, and right, it says here, notwithstanding above the required side and rear yard setbacks may be reduced by not more than fifty percent for an accessory building structure not exceeding a hundred and twenty square feet, that's what you're saying, in gross floor area and ten feet in height.
Okay.
There's a couple of rules, it's all, okay. I don't have any problem with it, but I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Well, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work with this, and I have, I have, I just, maybe it's fourteen feet instead of sixteen feet, and stay, and stay, stay seven and a half feet off the back line, if that, if you...
I, yeah, I mean, I guess, seven and a half feet, I could, I guess I could just shift it all over, because I said I'm about five feet right now, so two and a half feet.
So what, like move it, move it closer to your house?
Yeah.
I mean, you don't have a very, for a corner lot?
No, it's kind of a...
It's a small...
That's what I'm saying, I feel bad for him, because he's got...
Yeah, and the house is set back, I mean, I, I, you have, what, a one-car garage?
Yeah, one car, yeah.
The other side of his property slopes way down.
Yeah.
He's on a coordinated shed.
No.
This is the only location he has for that shed.
Yeah. So like I said, I'm, I'm fine with it.
All right, maybe else in the audience want to hear, be heard on this? If not, then we'll, you got the last word, we'll take, close the hearing and we'll take a vote.
Um, I don't know, I got nothing, I guess.
Okay.
I'm new to this.
All right, thank you.
I'm a lawyer.
Okay, you want to make a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion, that we approve this.
Motion by Mary to approve.
I second it.
Second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One, okay, four in favor, one opposed. You know what the procedure is now?
No, I don't.
You'll be getting a letter from town council approving the variance.
Yep.
Twenty-day appeal period, so at that point in time, anybody can come up and appeal our decision.